Noting the hour of 7:05 or 7:04 in a quorum present, I called to order the planning board meeting of April 19th, 2022. First item of business is approving the minutes of April 5th, 2022. Rob and Frank, have you had an opportunity to look at the minutes?
Yes, I have. It looked okay to me.
Okay, Frank?
Same.
Same. I had made one minor adjustment on page three, which was updated when Gino sent out the updated minutes. So do I have a motion to approve the planning board minutes of April 5th, 2022 as amended?
So moved.
It's been moved in a second. Did any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Rob?
Aye.
Aye.
And Chris is a nigh. Alright, so we have a 7:15 hearing and that is a discussion, apparently of whether or not this this board wants to support amendments to our bylaw for the open space subdivision. And at 7:45, we have some changes to our rules and regulations pertaining to streets, right-of-way, pavement width, and stormwater management. So I'm gonna wait for Addie May to do some of these things. Gino, regarding the letter, so did everyone have an opportunity to read the letter that I put together for the select board? Rob and Frank, you guys had a chance to look at that?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, it's very hard to have a frank discussion on Zoom. I'm being a little bit more cautious than maybe I should be, but I have some concerns about the home rule petition and the timing of it with the potential zoning discussion that may be attached to it. So I'm looking for guidance from the board. Rob, what do you think? You think I should leave it alone? You think I should send this letter? It's not, the letter is not a mandate. It's a request and they will probably not grant it. But again, at last meeting, we discussed, I discussed some of my concerns. So I'm looking for guidance. If the boards oppose to me sending it, it'll rip it up and we won't say anything. As I said in the letter, any of my concerns would not be brought up outside of our meeting. I would not bring it up at town meeting as well. So I'm looking for some help.
Well, I do see that when I look through some of the material the state has posted about the upcoming regulations, it's those, those MBTA communities, including the whatever category is called adjacent, adjacent community, whatever, they really cover a very large amount of eastern Massachusetts. It's not like some communities have opted in and some have opted out. It looks like basically every community that's adjacent to commuter rail community is also an MBTA community, as far as I can tell from the map. So it does seem like we'd be a bit of an outlier if we attempted to exit from MBTA. So I guess I don't have an objection to sending at least the sort of more cautious version of a letter. I, I think the planning board would definitely want to participate in the discussion at the select board and listen to what the municipal lawyer types there have to say about it.
Can you verify, Chris, that the letter that you're asking about is, because there were three letters sent to the planning board?
Yes, I took two of them. So the third one I sent out today. It's dated April 20th. It's sort of a hybrid. It's not too strong. It's not too soft. Again, and I'm gonna be very careful. I am not speaking for the board. I'm gonna sign it. And again, I'm just looking for input. I find that the two items, I don't think they're somewhat connected, but I would find it very hard to believe if they would let us use home rule to get out of housing obligations. I could be wrong. I've been wrong in the past, but, but we still have, you know, two and a half, maybe three years. And, and we still haven't heard yet. We haven't heard because we just submitted our sort of limitations on March 31st. So before we hear back, again, as I said at the last meeting, those are just some of my concerns. Frank, what do you think?
So I have my hand up and if I remember correctly, in the discussion of this, the, this warrant article is to allow them the ability to, not necessarily that they are going to. And I think if a letter from us is sent, it would help all five select board members see the position that the planning board has and why that position has been had. So if, even if it gets voted positively and the select board is given that ability to withdraw, it might give some time, might give some further discussion, it might allow us a spot at the table when that discussion does come about. So I don't see the, the negative or drawback for providing this, to give the perspective to them irrespective of which way the vote goes.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, it wasn't my intent to undermine them at all, but I just wanted to look at it from a planning point of view and not a governance point of view. That's sort of what I wanted to say in the letter and I hope that point got across. Alright, so with that, I'm gonna ask Gino to sign my name on it and send it out. Okay, Gino?
Okay, we'll go.
Alright, thank you.
Chris, just a point. I'm sorry, I hadn't actually seen the most recent copy. I missed that in the other email. So I was seeing where the email of last week where you mailed out version one and version two. But I'm just looking at the third one quickly, but the one that you just-
Go ahead. Go ahead. You have four minutes if you want to look at it.
Yeah. Okay, I mean-
Take your time.
There are some typos, Gino, just so you know, that are showing up on my Word version of it.
Okay.
There's, there's three typos that are Word found.
Are you saying I spelled something wrong?
No, I just, I retyped it and I made, I made the typos.
And while we're sitting here, I just wanted to remind folks that the way that your name presents on Zoom is how it's recorded in the minute. So if you would like to clarify your name or add your last name, that would be greatly appreciated. So we know who we're talking to. You can do that by hovering over your own square, pressing the three dots and dragging down to rename.
Chris, Marion has her hand up. Go ahead, Marion.
You're muted, Marion.
Sorry, I do that every time. One thing is, Chris, I wonder if you're discussing it, I haven't seen the letter, so I can't comment on the letter at all. But if you're discussing it tonight and then sending the letter, why is it that you want to sign it as an individual and not as a board? If you all agree, I don't know if you all agree, but-
We all, we all, we all, we all agree. We all agree, but things that I think might have a little bit of fallback. If the board is in agreement, I'm happy to put my name on it. That's all. It's not gonna hurt anyone's feelings, Marion.
No, no. It, just from the point of view of a select board member, if I can just take that position, since I happen to be here, that the select board right away will not want to know, is this just Chris Owen's opinion or is this a select, is this the planning board opinion?
It's a planning board opinion.
Okay.
We talked about it at our last meeting and I said I would write several letters and one soft, one hard, one just in the middle. Just, and that's all. But thank you, Marion. Rob, have you had a chance to finish looking at it?
Yeah. I guess the, the thing that's a little bit unclear is the, the last sentence of the first paragraph where the planning board is concerned about this and would prefer to hold off on such a decision. It's not clear to me whether the recommendation is, we're recommending against the warrant article itself or we're recommending against precipitously proceeding with the request to withdraw if the warrant article passes. That's somewhat ambiguous the way it's phrased.
I phrase it that way and I'm gonna let them look at it any way that they want. That was done on purpose, believe it or not. Because I don't want to tell them what to do and I didn't want it to be threatening. I just wanted to be, I wanted to show caution. That's all.
But, but Chris, what, what is meant? What is meant in the letter?
You'll, you'll see it.
I'll see, okay.
You'll see it. There's nothing bad. Alright, it is 7:15 and we have a hearing at 7:15. It is Article, is it 32? To change some language in our open space subdivision bylaw by adding provisions to require, actually, that's coming out of our minutes. So I'm not gonna read it because about two hours ago, I got an update on the warrant article. So what we're gonna do is we will have a presenter. The board will discuss it. I'm gonna limit the presenter to five minutes. It'll come back to the board. The board will discuss whatever they want to discuss about it. And then we'll open it up for public comment and then back to the board for a vote. Gino is gonna handle the hands up. And so when it gets to public comment or board discussion, Gino is just gonna tell me the order that people put their hands up. I can't see people on my screen and nor do I choose to. So with that, is Rebecca present?
She is and she's muted.
I needed to find the mute button. I'm here. Will you be able to see my presentation? Chris?
We should, we should be able to.
Oh, good. Okay. Excellent. So let me see if I can share the screen. Sorry, that took a moment.
That's okay.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak with you tonight. And it's a shame that it wasn't earlier in the spring, winter.
Okay.
So as you know, the, there was a citizen's petition that was put together literally within 48 hours of the deadline, not intentionally, but it just happened that way. And this is the wording of the original bylaw, which you, which multiple boards have seen and it became clear to the authors of the petition that this wording was not ideal. So we did, unfortunately, create some misinterpretations of the content of the bylaw proposed amendments. So a group has come together to propose two changes to the wording of the open space bylaw, which you are most familiar with. And I do not need to go into the intent of the open space bylaw or its contents. I sit on the Board of Health. I've been on the board for a couple, this is my third term. And believe it or not, we have been discussing these issues with the planning board and many involved parties for multiple years because there were two cases now, which, in which citizens of the town had public health risks, personal cost, and possible property value threatening by unintended consequences, well, by situations that are created by our unique situation in Sherburne, which is mostly created by state law. And although there are a lot of wonderful characteristics of living in Sherburne, there are some unique features which are introduced by our private wells. So the amendment's intention were to protect our shared drinking water because an open space subdivision will include or have the potential to include shared drinking water sources as well as potential other septic issues, but I won't go into that now. And the second proposed change was to, was to change the timing of when the environmental assessment takes place. As you, I'm sure, know, this is a standard part of the Board of Health procedures, but usually this is done farther into the process and often it leads to conflicts and delays progress and it can be frustrating for many parties involved. And this came to our attention because in January, just by coincidence, Massachusetts passed the 301 CMR 11, which is a new state law, mostly for targeting larger projects, but it's called NEPA. And this requires environmental health assessment prior to a project upfront in order for good decisions to be made. In our town, we already do this with 40Bs and it seemed to be a good idea because we have a fragile ecosystem and our drinking water is not protected. We did change the wording and I'm gonna go into that at the end of this, but this would be the new wording included here. But the intention remains the same, which is to protect the drinking water and to improve our ability to protect our natural resources and shared resources by moving the timing of the environmental assessment to the beginning of the process. I apologize. I know you know a lot of this, but as you know, we have 100% drinking water wells in Sherburne, which is unique. 98% of the towns in Massachusetts have the majority of drinking water supplies are public water supplies, which have some advantages, but mostly in the type of situations we face in the Board of Health, there is statutory protection. And you know, think Flint, Michigan, if something were to go wrong, there would be state support and protection and resources. And Sherburne, unfortunately, had, does not have statutory protection and that would not kick in until a threshold of 25 people. And so this change in the bylaw is intended to target that subset of the population where it would be below the threshold for public water supply protection. And, but obviously above one resident because that most subdivisions have more than one dwelling. And that would introduce shared resources and situations which lead to complications in other communities where shared resources are standard. So as you know, our town has wonderful, beautiful, special things which come as a result of our geology. And so these changes would hopefully have the ability to not only protect our drinking water, but also protect our environment, our natural resources and our property values, but most importantly, decrease the potential for liability in the town. But the other thing is that both of these changes are consistent with what is happening in 98% of the towns where public water supplies require these evaluations upfront and also just as a standard protocol. And we do this in the Board of Health. We just have to include some of those provisions specifically to apply to this particular bylaw, the open space subdivision bylaw. So I'll skip over this, it's a little bit redundant, but what I basically said is that the intent of these changes would be to make, to involve assessments in advance that would allow all the parties involved to make good decisions, a plan, systems that work and have the best ability to protect, to maintain the safe drinking water standards that we strive to do in the, on the Board of Health. But unfortunately, because we do not have public waters, why we all have private drinking waters, we lack statutory protection, which means that each individual would need to, you know, sue their neighbor or a butters. And, you know, often we've seen contractors sue the town. It's just unfortunate when conflicts arise and it'd be great to have as much information as possible in advance. So we can avoid some of those conflicts. And this is, again, what I was just saying, which would be that it is my experience that when we do our routine assessment of the environment for the Board of Health, we have, this is often where the conflicts arise between our board and involved parties. And I just think it makes sense to, to have it as part of the permitting process because that would just simplify things for everybody and save costs. So the, the main intent of these changes is to avoid unintended consequences, increase the value of this bylaw, which I think is very important, while decreasing costs to the town and possibly decreasing complications and unintended consequences for property owners, which as I mentioned previously, we now have our second example of an individual who ended up having to pay a lot of money to protect their interests. And it's possible that if that information was obtained in advance, there, some of these discussions could have been obviated. So what we are calling friendly amendments are the changes in wording, which I hope will clarify to everyone what probably would be in the best interest of the town, but also to clarify, increase the effectiveness of the bylaw. So the first, I broke these up into two so you could see it better, but the first friendly amendment is to, and we didn't eliminate any wording in the existing bylaw, both times we added at the end of a statement. So the up, the first paragraph on this slide is the existing wording of the open space subdivision bylaw. And the second paragraph is what would be added and what else you can read. But it says subdivisions with more than one residential unit, which are below the threshold for public water supply, will be required to develop protections, which are defined in the Board of Health regulations for a subdivision to meet safe drinking water standards. So this might not be necessary, but I felt that since the, or I should say, those involved in this, in these conversations felt that since the bylaw is encouraging cluster zoning, which is good, unfortunately, in the absence of statutory protection, it would be illegal to require testing or monitoring or, or anything that might be appropriate under given circumstance. So this is routinely under the jurisdiction of the Board of Health and we thought that it might strengthen the Board of Health if they, if within the bylaw, it reinforces that the Board of Health has the ability to require whatever is felt to be appropriate in a particular situation. Because obviously, every proposed bylaw will have its own characteristics and size and thresholds and things like that. Second amendment was to, we've significantly simplified this statement, but just to say must submit an environmental impact report. These are, there are different procedures which are done at the state level. And I know that the Conservation Commission has their environmental assessment tools. And in the Board of Health, we refer to it as EHI R. At the state, it's called an environmental impact report, but it's basically an analysis and it could be including but not limited to, or I'm not sure what you or the town council or whoever is more knowledgeable than I would think would be the appropriate wording here. But we thought that it would make sense to move this and require or request an EIR together with the application for subdivision. So all the information is present at the, at the outset. And as I mentioned before, this is important because our town, most of our Board of Health regulations that exist today are designed for the standard scenarios, which is one dwelling on one lot. And as soon as we have shared resources, it becomes a little bit more challenging to protect public health, to assess impacts on the environment and to avoid liability to the town of Sherburne. So the intent was to hopefully obtain some of this information upfront so that the best decisions and plans could be made for all involved parties. This is just what the wording would be if it's enacted, which is inserting those statements in. And I did provide you with a red line version in your email today and I, I don't know why I thought the meeting was gonna be in person because the town meeting's in person. But anyway, so you should have it now. Anyways, I know there have been some questions and discussions about the bylaw, but I don't know whether you want to discuss some of those now.
Um, we can. I personally have a lot of concern. Excuse me?
I was gonna say, that's all I was gonna say.
Oh, okay. I understand and applaud the result that you're trying to achieve and respect the signers of the petition. Independent, so I actually like what you've written and proposed today infinitely better than what I saw before. So let me just say that. But I still have many problems with the process. Zoning bylaws were important protections and as such, steps should be taken to vet them properly. Article 32 should have begun with the Board of Health. I do not think the Board of Health voted in support of this. I know I'm wrong. So it should have started with the Board of Health and the Conservation Commission. And quite honestly, I'm happy to work on this, but without their input, I'm opposed to this article. Town meeting is one week away and two hours ago, I received the update. And again, it looks and reads nothing like the original. So in the town meeting handout, the article that's already preprinted is very, very different from what we're talking about tonight. And, and again, with a citizen's petition, people are signing something, the thing they signed back in January or February is very different because there are no signatures on this. It's probably too late at that, at this point. Zoning changes are also a very high bar that require in most situations, not some housing situations, but in most situations, they were, it requires a two-thirds vote. So what I had suggested before, and I know I've mentioned this to the select board, and I know I've mentioned it to advisory, and I've mentioned it to other members of Board of Health, planning board would be- Planning Board would be thrilled to have the opportunity to work with the Board of Health and Conservation, put together something um, that really is concise and really does what we want. Um, and, and if the article's withdrawn, we would probably be able to come back to town meeting this time next year, where if it goes to town meeting and it gets defeated, then I think you have two years before you can come back. So that was one thought. But even where it says to develop protections, you know, I consider that vague. I, I think the wording has to be much more specific. So do we wanna hold them to a public water supply standard? Is that even legally possible?
No, 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 it can't be. It's not. That's not what we're saying.
I, I know that's not what you're saying, but, but what I'm, what I'm saying is to be required to develop protections. Well, is it the Board of Health that defines whether they've done enough? Is it the Planning Board? Is it the Conservation? So in other words, what I'm saying is when we, that first paragraph, we should be able to say to somebody building a house or multiple houses, this is what we expect of you. Not, or come back again, that wasn't good enough. And that's, i- i- it was very vague. And the second part, um, the environmental impact assessment report, um, I don't know if every town insists on that prior to forty B development. I know that they used it when they built pipelines up in Alaska. And I know they used it when they um, with Deepwater Horizon. So these things, and again, thi- this, it's a big, big scale. But again, actually what we're asking for, if, if you had said an environment, an environmental health impact report, then I'd say, okay, I know exactly what that is. This, I, I, I don't know how we're gonna apply that and apply it fairly. Um, and, and this is where I think we need much more discussions. So that's all I'm gonna say. And I'm gonna throw it to Rob and Frank. So does any of the other board members have thoughts, concerns?
Chris Addy May has her hand raised.
Please, Addy May.
Hi, everyone. Rebecca, that was a nice presentation and I really, I'm, I'm with Chris and I really appreciate the intent. Um, and I, this presentation was much clearer than other things that we saw previously. And I guess the problem still comes down to the process in, for multiple things. I thi- I feel like there's just more time needed to, if we're going to bring something to zoning, to make sure that we really know the answer to some of the um, you know, what are the definitions? And I still am not sure that it needs to be. And I guess this is where more discussion, I don't know necessarily that we can't somehow find, um, the goal is to require some reckoning or so, or improve awareness um, of the environmental impacts and the process with Planning Board is often you know, preliminary review, and then there's more detail and, and that's at the stage that Board of Health and Conservation get involved and it's never been the case that anything that Planning Board signs off on is a done deal. There's lots of lots around this town that are lots, but they're not necessarily buildable lots. And I guess in general, if there's ways that we can as a town further educate developers who come to town, it's always been a longstanding problem. So again, I don't know that this is quite ready to go forward without it becoming something that just feels too tentative at town meeting and gets shot down just because there's too much doubt and the bar of two-thirds vote is too high.
Rob, do you have any comments?
Yes, well, I guess I have two, one of which is, yes, I am a little concerned as to why this is originating as a citizen's petition and not direct from the Board of Health. And um, secondly, I, I have read through some of these regulations, but I'm not really all that familiar with the health regulations. Uh, I don't know if we, if this is the appropriate time to get into an in-depth discussion of it, but I would uh, my understanding is, is that if you were building a subdivision and you had shared wells supporting a significant number of units, what is it, ten or more, that those would automatically fall under the public water supply? But it's when you have a smaller number.
It's, it's twenty-five users.
It doesn't, no, no, this only would apply to private, we are, we have private water supplies. Until we're serving twenty-five residences or twenty-five people, it would not be ever classified as a public water supply. So we're not looking for that at all because most of the time, we're trying to protect the interests of the when there are shared resources that don't meet that threshold, because that's where we have, we, we don't have regulations, but we're working on them and where the challenges take place.
Rob, any other questions?
No, that was basically the ques- so as an example, if you're building a um, a development with two and three unit townhouses and you had one well per townhouse, then you're saying currently they would not be treated any differently than one well per residence, which is over pretty much all of the town. But you would like the ability to have the Planning Board enforce the, the stricter state public requirements.
No, no, no. Can I, I'm sorry, should I wait until you're done talking, then can I have a moment to respond or should I respond as we go?
Go ahead, you could, you may respond to Rob, it's fine.
Yeah, so um, that was one of the major, and I apologize for the misinterpretation. Maybe I should step one step farther back, but um, there never was an intent to classify these as a public water supply. So the way we worded it definitely apparently gave that impression and it wasn't intended. So we hopefully have improved it. We haven't changed the um, content of any of these with the wording. We've just eliminated sort of unnecessary things. Um, this, the, the, there isn't a problem when it's a public water supply because that's regulated by D E P. The Board of Health regulations right now are designed for individual dwellings on individual lots and we accomplish most of, and I was using the term protections to basically refer to what the Board of Health will do and what the Board of Health does do in the regulations. The Board of Health is trying, the goal of all the regulations is to protect the drinking water and natural resources. That's the, that's all, that's just a given. Um, and when regulations are created, the intent is to continue with those goals. So that was being used as a sort of reference to the Board of Health, writing the Board of Health's own regulations. This is not, the Planning Board would not be writing the Board of Health regulations or involved in any way with that. But this would support the Board of Health in their efforts to enforce the regulations because that's where we sometimes get into conflicts with you know, somebody having with a project or her property owners have to sue or other towns.
Yep, yep, well, you know, I don't know, I don't know. I'm in agreement. I am a hundred percent
Yeah.
in support of the Board of Health. Um, and that's why I said it really, I'd really like to have a joint meeting and I'd like to have the Board of Health actually saying to the Planning Board, this is what we want you to do for us. And my next step would be town council, is this legal to do?
Yeah.
And so, so, but again, just to say to somebody, you have to develop protections. Again, who enforces that? And, and that's a rhetorical question. I'm not expecting.
This is saying Board of Health, your bylaw already states that the Board of Health regulations apply. This is saying that you are supporting the Board of Health.
I, I get it. We are supporting the Board, but what I'm saying is the Board of Health at a public hearing any day of the week, as long as it's posted two weeks out, they could put that into their regulations. It doesn't have to be a bylaws change and it doesn't have to go to town meeting. The Board of Health has that ability to do it all by themselves. And if they, and if they wanted in a bylaw, I would by all means support that, but I would wanna support that with a discussion with our respect of the entire Board of Health. Um, Frank, did you have any questions?
I, I, I agree with, with what everybody said so far uh, from our planning board. And I, 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 again, this is much cleaner language, so I applaud that. I can now understand this better. I do, from what I understand you're asking for is that this environmental impact report happens earlier on in the process and you're asking a developer to provide that in advance earlier on in the beginning. And I, I, I can't foresee what the problem with that is. With that said, uh, I, I do also um, follow what Chris is saying with that. It should be the Board of Health that comes to us to ask for that as a first reading of citizen petition.
All right, um, let's open it up for public comment. Gino, you're gonna have to manage this.
Chris, can I make two responses?
Of course.
So the first thing I want to say that is definitely important for you to understand was that our first case where we were introduced to um, what I'm referring to as unintended consequences was in two thousand seventeen. And that particular resident has paid twenty, you know, twenty-seven thousand dollars out of pocket, has a new well, all these other things, and just barely a week ago, might have re- reached, had for three years, non-potable water. And the second case came before the Board of Health only in November. And it was because of the timing that the idea of a citizen's petition came up, not because we in any way wanted to avoid um, normal procedure. And that, I guess it's me sort of being naive or um, and I apologize because I thought we would have sufficient time to have those proper joint hearings. And I did ask to be on your agenda, but I was told I wasn't able until the nineteenth, because that was, because you had a lot of things on your plate before then, so.
No, 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 it, it was a posting requirement, because we needed a certain amount of time to post the meeting. That was the only reason.
Oh, but it was like, it was li- literally two mo- six weeks ago that I asked to be on your agenda.
Uh, no, I'm sorry, because when people wanna be on, I put them right on. Gino, I, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna turn this into a match, like who said this and that.
Oh, it's okay. That, I mean, it, I just wanted you to know that it wasn't in any way intended the way it seems, but it was an opportunity.
I, I, I am not saying, I'm not saying, I'm not saying anyone intended to do anything. All I'm doing is I'm talking about the process and again, you know, something like this, if the Board of Health came to us and said, we need to talk to the Planning Board, I would say tomorrow, come on in, let's chat. Um, these things, some of it seems very vague to me. And, and again, the environmental impact assessment report, that, that's something very, very new. And the scope of that could be an oil platform, or it could be a skyscraper, and maybe a very, very large subdivision. So I'm just trying to look at how this is gonna work in to what we're trying to make relatively manageable to understand and and work with regulations and bylaws. Um, and again, I'm not saying that this is wrong. I'm saying, I don't know. I saw this two hours ago. And again, it would, it would have to take more discussions than us right now. And there's no question in my mind, town council would have to be super involved with this just to make sure it's enforceable, just to make sure it's legal. So with that, Gino, if you would open it up to public comment.
Marion and Daryl each have their hand up right now.
Okay, Marion, please.
Right, I, I, Rebecca, I know you've heard this from me before, so I apologize, but I do want to say it for the other people, the other supporters of this petition that might be present. Uh, it's important that everything you put in this citizen's petition be correct. Be, be uh, be a true reflection of what our Planning Board uh, bylaws and regulations are. And uh, I'll leave the first part of this aside for now because I agree with Chris on that. But as far as the environmental impact report, uh, you state every time that I hear this presented uh, that uh, the environmental impact assessment or report needs to be done before permitting. The Planning Board rules and regulations clearly state that environmental impact assessment is required before permitting. That means before any shovel goes in, goes in the ground to build anything, before a building permit. Um, and uh, before the Planning Board approves the subdivision, it is required. It's written in our rules and regulations. It's not in the bylaw because it doesn't belong in the bylaw. It belongs in the rules and regulations for subdivisions. And so I, I just hope you'll correct.
That's great. I was not aware that it, there was a.
No, I referred you to that and to the exact section and I've read it to you. And uh, you know, I, I, like other members of the board, I'm sympathetic with your with your concern for the environment. Certainly, I join you in that. But uh, I just wanna make sure that you don't present something to the town that is not true. And uh, that's, that's all I have to say, really.
All right, thank you, Marion. Daryl?
Okay, so I just wanted to make two comments. Uh, one is about uh, regulations that do already exist within the Board of Health to address the incident that Rebecca was referring to that took place in two thousand seventeen. And that was the result of an emerging phenomenon as more marginal properties are getting developed because of the high value of land and the greater ledge disruption that is going on. And so that this phenomenon where there's manganese contamination of groundwater sometimes as a result is something that states are just beginning to wrestle with. And when that took place, we did enact new regulations to address that specific concern of a protective nature. So uh, just in case anyone's concerned that we are not paying attention, we did that right away after that came to light. Um, and the other is that we do have I mean, I guess what the Board of Health regulations are all about is trying to protect public health in a variety of ways, and certainly groundwater is perhaps the most important arena that we operate in. And our regulations cover not only single-family homes, but also um, businesses and, and larger establishments. And at some part, point when it gets large enough, it trips over and to be regulated by the state. So there's not a lack of protection for subdivisions. We have a special part of our regulations devoted to other than a single-family home on a single lot. Uh, we are continually trying to strengthen that. That was not much of an issue in Sherburne in the past, but it is a growing issue. And so we are expanding our regs to meet those um, new challenges. Thank you.
Gino, anyone else's hand?
Yes, yes, Anne Schuet.
Please, Anne.
Hello, um, so I'm a citizen. I signed a citizen's petition. My feeling is that by bringing the open spaces bylaw um, in alignment with the laws around forty B fees and individual homes in Sherburne and towns with public drinking water, it's only going to help better protect residents' health, property values, and against liability. And it's very confusing for me to understand why all the other people on the Board of Health are against this. It doesn't make sense to me, which is why I signed a petition. And it seems like something that is becoming more urgent and happening more frequently where you have these subdivisions flying in. So that's why I feel it's, felt it was important for something to address, because it sounds like it's been discussed for quite a while. The regulations are now only being strengthened, as Daryl mentioned, why only now? So to me, it just seems like it's been sitting for a long time, which is why I put in my support for this.
Gino, anyone else's hand up?
No.
All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to the board. It's gonna be a positive motion. So if you're in favor of supporting Article thirty-two, you would respond with an I. So if you're in favor of supporting Article thirty-two, you would respond with an I. If you do not want to support Article thirty-two, it would be a nay. So do I have a motion for the planning board to support Article thirty-two, um, the amendment to the open space bylaw? Do I have a motion?
Motion to support Article thirty-two amendment to open space bylaw.
And do I have a second?
Second.
It's moving seconded. Does the board have any other discussion? Okay, so hearing none, all, all those in favor of supporting the changes to the open space bylaw as drafted in Article thirty-two signify by saying I. I'm gonna start with Rob. Addie May.
Aye.
Frank? And Chris is a nay. Um, thank you, Rebecca. Believe it or not, I am looking forward to working with you and the Board of Health on this in the future. So we're a little bit behind, which is fine. At seven forty-five, I'd like to, um, open a hearing to consider changes to our rules and regulations pertaining to streets right of way and pavement widths, stormwater management standards and precipitation data. So even though this is all, I'm gonna clump this all together, what I would like to do is I'd like to discuss each one individually. I'd like to discuss each one individually and vote on each one separately. So, do you want to take this, Gino, or you want me to take it?
Um, either way.
Okay, well, I'll start and then you fill in the gaps.
Okay.
So the first, the first change is to section three point four point two point one six. And we're gonna add language. Does everyone have it in front of you? So the sentence goes drainage design shall incorporate best management practices. And then we're gonna add compliance with EPA two thousand sixteen mass MS four general permit as it may be amended from time to time by EPA. So, um, that's the amendment rate there. Gino, do you want to comment, or does any of the board have any questions?
Yeah, I'll comment that, um, simply that, um, MS four is a requirement that we're, um, that we have to comply with. So by adding this, it just puts us in line with what the federal government and state are already requiring us to do. It just makes it clearer uh, as part of site plan review. And we have a similar addition li- a little bit later concerning subdivisions, but this one pertains to site plan.
Okay, um, does any of the board have any other questions regarding this one section? Okay, open it up. Does anyone in the audience, Gino, anyone in the public have a comment or suggestion?
There's no hands up.
Okay, so.
Eric Johnson has his hand raised.
Eric, you gotta be quicker. Eric, please.
Thank you. Sorry, I was looking for my little hand. You're going fast. I was looking for my little hand raised function in here. And I was just, uh, coming in from across the room. Um, only small thing, um, is, uh, I guess it makes sense, but we, we have to be ready to revise this if they actually make a new general permit. See, in theory, the two hundred, the twenty sixteen general permit, which I think was effective like eighteen or nineteen after a court had actually, um, suspended it based on, um, appeals in court, is actually a five-year permit. So I think we're in year three or four right now. Um, the general consensus is that actually they're probably not gonna make a new permit. They might make modifications to it. And I don't know if it's worth getting legal support or not to actually remove twenty sixteen from the sexual reference or just have another hearing in a couple of years to add the, um, you know, if they actually do issue a new permit to actually have that new reference. That, that was all, all there.
Well, what I have mentioned to Gino, I think every September, we should sit down and have a meeting and look at the MS four things and make sure that um, we're in compliance and that the planning board's obligations are fulfilled. So I would say, leave it in and, and we'll just keep an eye on it each time it cycles through. Is that fair?
Yeah, that sounds like a good idea. My only other thing I, and you know, some of these comments might have come from, um, you know, uh, my email. And I, one of the other thing is on, there's no reference to the town general, um, general bylaw. And maybe there is at the beginning. I mean, I didn't read every letter of the entire, you know, rules and regulations. Because you cite, obviously, the Nipton's permit here, you cite the, um, was it the DEP stormwater standards? Which is the whole reason, by the way, I wanted the Nipton's permit cited because the Nipton's permit requirements are close to the DP, but they're not the same. DP is not modified to be as stringent as the EPA, um, requirements. And EPA requirements, again, are more stringent, particularly things outside of resource areas. Um, so all that being said, I don't know if it's worth having some reference to the, um, Sherburne, um, stormwater bylaw in here as well. Might be redundant. It might be, be covered by, uh, all local rules upfront, or it might be automatic because it is a Sherburne bylaw. I'm not sure.
Gino, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I think because it is a Sherburne, it is a bylaw that's also in effect. It has to be complied with. Um, regardless, but, but furthermore, just, um, what that bylaw does say is if you are applying for a subdivision or a site plan or a special permit, that's, that's granted by the planning board. You don't have to reply separately for the stormwater bylaw, but you do have to comply with its provisions. So I think we're covered.
And it has a land disturbance requirement. Isn't it disturbance, is it more than an acre, or did they make it smaller than an acre?
No, it's, it's an acre.
An acre, okay. An acre is a minimum mandated by the, by the Nipton's permit.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Eric. Does anyone else have any other questions, Gino?
Uh, yes, Rob Wolf has his hand raised.
Rob, please.
Uh, yeah, I guess I'm just, uh, I'm a little confused about the, what is the applicability of this? Does this refer to all subdivisions but not to individual lots, or what, what's the applicability here?
That, that's correct. The, it's, it's, it, well, this, this two places where it's inserted, but it applies to, in this context, it applies to subdivision, site plans and subdivisions. However, as Eric mentioned, we have a stormwater management bylaw that applies to any property that disturbs more than one acre. So even a single family uh, property that disturbs and, and they can get, it can get up to an acre when you consider the septic system and driveway and maybe a pool or accessory building, um, and the lawn. Uh, even, you know, even on a two or three acre lot, sometimes, uh, more than an acre gets disturbed. So, so, yeah, but these provisions are specific to site plan review and subdivisions.
All right, any other questions, Gino? Anyone else with their hand up?
No.
Do I have a motion to approve the added language for section three point four point two point one six? Adding compliance with the EPA two thousand sixteen Massachusetts MS four general permit as it may be amended from time to time by EPA. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
All right, I'll second it.
It's been moved a second. Is there any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying I. Rob?
Hi.
Addie May?
Hi.
Frank?
Hi.
And Chris is an I. The next section is section four point four point one to add language under section B, where it says, um, Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection, ten stormwater management standards and adding the language and with the EPA two thousand sixteen Massachusetts MS four general permit as it may be amended from time to time by EPA. So that is the, uh, added language. Does the board have any questions?
This is the section that's for subdivisions under this particular.
Gino?
Yes, this one would apply to subdivisions.
Are there any other questions? All right, do I have a motion to approve the addition to section four point four point one that adds and with the EPA two thousand sixteen Massachusetts MS four general permit as it may be amended from time to time by the EPA? So do I have a motion? Do I have, do I have a second? It's been moved a seconded. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, I'm gonna start with Rob. Rob?
Hi.
Addie May?
Hi.
Frank?
Hi.
And Chris is an I. All right, the next one is section four point four, point four under drainage criteria. It says under B, the added language is, uh, NOAA Atlas fourteen has amended the Northeast Regional Climate Center, um, Atlas of Precipitation Experience for Northeastern United States and South, Southeastern Canada. And at the end of the paragraph, they describe the specified design storm shall be defined as a twenty-four hour storm using one of the preceding rainfall distribution calculations. You guys have that all in front of you, don't you? Okay, so, so that is the proposed amendment. Does any of the board have any questions? Does anyone else have any questions, Gino?
No, no hands raised.
Eric, do you have any questions?
Just to, just if, for a little bit of explanation, and, and Eric can correct me if I'm wrong. Or he may want to add something, but the, the, there, when engineers do drainage designs, there's a standard of, of manual that, uh, determines what, uh, what, what a hundred year storm is, what a twenty-five year storm is, et cetera. And those have been outdated now because storms are getting more frequent and more intense. And these, these standards, uh, uh, supplant the old standards. So this brings us more up to date with, uh, current rainfall rates.
With bigger storms.
Correct.
All right, is there any other discussion, any other question?
I, I have a question. You talked about the twenty-four hours, uh, design of, um, twenty-four hour storm using preceding, um, rainfall distribution. Is that increased? Is that now a larger size, or is that? Is it just being specified now, but that was always the standard?
Gino?
Well, it, it's, it's basically a similar standard, but by using the, the new uh, rates from, from NOAA Atlas fourteen or Northeast Regional Climate Center, it, it inclu- it automatically includes a more intense storm.
I think what Frank was asking is, um, did it, there's twice a less than twenty-four hour storm before. It's always been twenty. Just that the NOAA makes it more now, it's more specific. It's now a specified language and then they make it the twenty-four hour.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? All right, so we're gonna have a motion to section, to, um, section four point four point four to amend and add NOAA Atlas fourteen has amended the Northeast Regional Climate Center, Atlas of Precipitation Experience for the Northeastern United States and Southeastern Canada. As well as at the end of the paragraph, the specified design storm shall be defined as a twenty-four hour storm using one of the preceding rainfall distribution calculations. That is a motion on the table. Do I have a motion? It's been moved. Do I have a second?
Go ahead, Frank.
Second.
Anyone, anyone, it's been moved a seconded. Is there any other discussion, any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying I. Rob?
All right.
Addie May?
Aye.
Frank?
Hi.
And Chris is an I. The next amended paragraph is section four point three point three that says, street pavement shall be, oh, oh, no, no, I didn't highlight the whole thing. Minimum with the street rights of way shall be sixty feet. The street pavement shall be twenty-two feet or is approved by the planning board based on specific conditions of the site or proposed subdivision. So historically, that used to be sixty feet. And then a few years ago, we reduced it to, um, forty-five feet. And we'd like to bring it back to sixty. Um, I think that gives us more alternatives for, um, stormwater issues. And the downside to it is it basically also will limit some developments. So, does anyone have any questions? Gino, anything you want to add?
Uh, Eric has his hand raised.
Eric, please.
Yeah, so that, my question is, um, I didn't see the cross-section. Uh, so is the cross-section, uh, include curbing or probably no curbing? Is it all designed to be sheet flow onto like some kind of landscape surface?
No, the cross-section shows curbing.
It does show curbing.
Or burn.
I, I think twenty-two feet is probably a bit too narrow, to be honest with you. I get the whole point of it. Um, and that's impactless impervious surface, you know, a, um, a, you know, two-spec mast D O T travel lane is eleven feet wide. This puts, uh, vehicles driving right on the edge. It'd probably be fine subdivision. You're not gonna get tractor trailer trucks, anything like that. Even the average pickup truck will probably be fine on, uh, what's, this'll make like almost a ten-foot lane. Um, you know, with the striping and stuff like that. Um, it just feels a bit narrow.
Excuse me for just one second. Uh, it shows, yes, the, 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 uh, the sketch shows Cape Cod burn outside the travel lane, not within it.
Okay, just, you know, just, to me, twenty-two feet, and I guess I get it. It's not the end of the world and people will drive a little slower, perhaps. I think that might be, you know, a good thing, but it will cause quicker deterioration of roads because ultimately a vehicle's gonna be driving on the edge of the road. Whether you have a burn, whether you don't have a burn, burn will ma- will increase the lifespan of the road. Because it'll drain better and it'll go into a designed, um, stormwater system versus going sheet flow over land, which then you never really have puddles freezing and thawing on the edges of roads. And then you have vehicles driving on top of the edges of the roads. Um, but just, I mean, I don't feel strongly about it, but twenty-two feet seems a bit narrow. I'm just curious what the genesis, if there's other examples of that. Uh, works as a twenty-four, twenty-five.
So, so, so here's a question. How would you feel about twenty-four feet? That gives another foot on each side.
I would think that would actually increase the longevity of the road. But I'm curious, was, is our basis of the twenty-two. I have something I hadn't seen before. You know what I mean? I was curious if there was a, um, if there was a basis to that, another example in the town, or if it was just kind of, if there's actually a real example of it. I mean, my, my experience even is limited with a lot of this stuff, you know what I mean? So I was just curious if there's a basis to the twenty-two. I would recommend like a twenty-four. I don't know what other people think. It certainly goes against, and I know the subdivision, but with corridors, mast D O Ts going the opposite direction right now. Because they want bike lanes. They want eleven foot plus five feet. They actually want, um, sixteen feet on each lane for everything for, um, you know, to allow bike lanes. And obviously, this is, you know, but, you know, again, it's competing interests.
Okay, Gino, what are your thoughts?
Well, it's, right now, it's twenty-four by virtue of the, the sketch that shows the dimensions of twelve-foot travel lanes plus the Cape Cod burn. So, so, uh, if this were defeated, it would just remain already as twenty-four.
Okay, I'm gonna start with Rob. Rob, what are your thoughts? Let's start with what Rob knows.
I'm sorry, Chris. Frank had his hand up for us, then Rob and Eddie May also has her hand.
But, but, but let's just start with Cedar Hill, Gino. What's, how wide is the pavement there? Do you know?
I don't know off the top of my head.
That's okay. Frank, your hand was up?
I put it down. I, I, I lost track of my, um, my comment.
Okay. Does, Addie May, did you have any thoughts?
Um, remind me, and I'm not muted, sorry. Um, yeah, just, I guess I'm a little the right of way doesn't necessarily dictate the pavement width.
No.
So can, we can go back to the sixty-foot right of way and still have a pavement concern. I guess, um, but I'm sorry, Eric, did you have, you want to clarify something with the, the distinction between right of way and, uh, pavement width here that we're?
I was planning on saying silent on the right of way. I thought I said, I thought I made enough people angry on it two weeks ago, whatever it was. Um, yeah, I mean, the right of way is actually what, what is in the public right of way because you're right, you put sidewalks, but utilities, you put the road itself. Put curbing, you know, that is what the town basically becomes, um, it can be done via easement or by fee, but it basically becomes the ownership and essentially that property of the actual town when the town does public acceptance of it. The end, and what's outside of the right of way are the various lots that have to meet zoning dimension requirements and so on like that. Payment width is just simply that payment width. So it's just literally the width of the road. How, how far do you construct it? I almost wish you could have a cross-section that we can, uh, share up here. We can kind of see like, you know, you'll see, um, you know, road width, curbing, sidewalks, either one side or both sides. Perhaps bike lanes, utilities and so on like that and all within the actual, you know, what called the right of way, called consider a property boundary for all intents and purposes.
So do we have the, can we throw the language up in front of us that we're actually looking at that would be changed or that we're? Or do we have that? Or George, did you have? I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead of everybody here.
I have a big one on the show.
There are two separate edits, Eddie May. One is changing from forty-five to sixty feet for the right of way. And then there's an additional sentence on the end that talks about street pavement being twenty-two feet.
Can can I see it from mine?
Well, I can. Thank you, Frank, and I appreciate this. I guess somehow I thought I had read everything in advance, but I must have missed.
So in in follow-up to your question, Eddie May, not to jump in front of you, Rob, but apologize for proving so rude. If if the street width is twenty-two feet, does that that constitutes like forty-four and that forty-five feet would just give six inches per each side? So that you have a total of forty-five is is that how they go together? If it were still the forty-five and the street width were twenty-two feet? Is it that twenty-two feet per line?
No, no.
That's full straight width.
Okay, I'm sorry. So I this is going the direction I thought we were trying to get to. I guess. I guess then. Can we break this up? Is everyone in agreement with going back to sixty feet and then the second? And then there's just two issues, right? There's the sixty feet right of way, and then there's just the pavement question of twenty-two.
Correct. Correct.
And I mean, I. I know West Western Avenue was striped at ten and a half. Feet wide lanes. To to do some traffic calming, but I also. Know that it's it's in a little wider than than that, and there is a lot to be said for the road erosion. The pavement erosion on the edges and people do like to run on our streets. Bike on our streets. We don't have sidewalks everywhere. So having a little bit more room outside the striping. Is a benefit.
Well, then you want to go sixty for the right of way and twenty-four for the pavement?
I mean, I feel like that's a good compromise.
All right. Frank and Rob, what do you guys think about that?
Well, maybe Eric can weigh in here because I just like.
Well, I was going to ask him after you guys. I was going to ask him after. You're the board member, so.
Yeah, but I have a specific technical question. Which is that. We could consider. You know, a couple of different widths we might want. Twenty-two feet seems reasonable if we're only allowing for automobile traffic. If we wanted like wide. Wide lanes that, you know, somebody could bike on the street in, you would want more width than that. But if you're looking at the requirements of. You need some sort of curbing and then maybe there's a strip of grass, some allowance for where you plow the snow and then maybe a sidewalk and he said, what's? How much additional right of way do you need on each side of the pavement? To be reasonable to allow for all that? Is that ten feet on each side? I I just don't know what the standard, you know, sort of engineering requirements would be. What would the town want to accept it as a public way?
Is that question? Is that directed to me? Guys, that question?
Go ahead. Go ahead, Eric.
Yes, please.
I can tell you that the twenty-eight feet, which is fourteen feet on each side, is larger than I've ever seen in my life. I didn't want to talk and right away with you. I was going to stick to pavement. But they have a twenty-two-foot street and a sixty-foot. Right away is as unusual as you'll ever see. You have enough to put in two other streets. I think you'll definitely be fine when it comes to plowing and sidewalks and and we're a town without utilities. So I mean, you have enough, you have forty, you have twenty-eight feet to put in a cable line. And, you know, I'm being a little sarcastic, but not really, you know what I mean? So, yes, you definitely have more of the standard is like five or six. It really is, you know, you do a you do a and that's old school standard, you know, do pavement, you do curbing, then you got a sidewalk and then the person owns the backside of the sidewalk. That is a standard you see pretty much everywhere. You know, forty-foot, forty-foot is probably the most standard right of way with you see around anywhere. And it wants any subdivision, stuff like that. Sherwin is unusual at sixty. If you hear at the last meeting, I talked about some of the unusual natures and how, you know, very few actual subdivisions have been constructed to that. So such I think we've exempted people outside of sixty-one who've actually in four sixty and someone can verify that. And that's just based on my. You know, back then on the look, it's kind of the number is what it is. I don't think it's that hard. I think if someone came in and pushed it in court, you know, you'll do it quickly, probably say, okay, you don't have to do sixty, wouldn't matter in that. To me, it's more about the twenty-two. I'm curious, and I'm not against twenty-two. I was wondering if it's been done before. Is this unusual to me? That's all it is. I've seen twenty-four and one of the reasons is the wear and tear on the side. And now I'm getting with bike lanes, but bike lanes, you know, probably aren't that critical on subdivisions. Mast D O T wants to see bike lanes and corridors. They want to see bike lanes on like, you know, Coolest Street and Route twenty-seven. That's where they really want to see bike lanes. I don't know how much they care if like, you know, Noel has bike lanes or whatever, you know. So but there's still something about it, you know, where people might walk in the road or it might be a little bit with there, you know, I get the environmental side of it, but there's always so much you can kind of narrow things down. I was surprised Addy mentioned that Western Ave that has less, oh, the place where it necks down is where it goes ten and a half feet. Because the general cross-section of Western Ave has got to be more than twenty-two. It's going to be even more than twenty-four, you'd think, but. Are you talking to traffic calming areas by the parking lots?
The entire width of Western Avenue when it got restripped was done at ten and a half feet width.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, and that's 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 not much at all, so. You know, maybe twenty-two is enough.
The pavement wasn't changed, but the striping, the fog lines.
Yep. Oh, I see what you're saying. Instead of making eleven-foot lanes, they painted a ten-and-a-half-foot lanes, but then outside the white fog lines is um whatever they got.
If someone was in a pinch, they there's room to go, but the 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 striping chokes, you know, gives it an illusion and hopefully slows people down.
Yeah. That's a good idea. You can mention about striping if that's external. So I guess I guess here's my question. Was there basis of twenty-two? Was this citing of of another community or something like that? It might, and again, it might not be the worst thing in the world. Was there rationale? Was it based on?
Stormwater.
Area pavement, stormwater. Okay, okay, that was our traffic calming. That's why traffic calming could be another reason as well, which could just take care of that in the striping. You know, I don't want to, I don't upset things. Twenty-two is probably not the worst thing in the world. We'll see what someone applies applies for, particularly to sidewalks. Maybe that's a good thing. Maybe say the standard is twenty-two as long as there's a sidewalk installed. So then, because then you have that that width for, you know, um. You know pedestrians and so on.
They were putting more pavement down.
I know. Unless he's a concrete sidewalk. And sidewalk should be a minimum five feet. That's all I'm saying.
So what is the? That's okay, Marion?
I think Rob has his hand up.
Yeah.
Oh. Sorry, I had just kind of left it up, I guess, but I guess I'm still, you know. I could certainly see that if it's a large subdivision. With a lot of traffic through it, kind of like. There's a fair amount of traffic on was at Mayflower Landing going into the big subdivision. There. You might want to have it. A little bit wider. You might want to have lanes striped ten and a half or eleven feet wide, but then. Three feet more of pavement for somebody to ride a bike in.
But that but that's written right here. Or is approved by the planning board based on specific conditions or the site or proposed subdivision?
Right, so what I'm getting to is like, you know, it might be reasonable in some cases for it to be as narrow as twenty-two or possibly as wide as twenty-eight. If for a particular subdivision, and I guess that would be kind of at the discretion of the planning board. The question then is if, you know, if you're never going to be wider than, say, twenty-eight in a subdivision. Doesn't seem like you need more than fifty. So are we going back to sixty? Because we think we really need it, or is it just because that's what we used to have and we're just returning to what we used to have?
So that's why my hand is up.
Okay, Marion, Marion, please.
All right, sorry to jump in like that, but.
Nope, no, you're good.
I I.
Can we stop the screen share or do we still need the screen share, do you think?
I I I think we can stop, but it's up to others. Yeah. It was Gino and I sitting and going through those regulations that thought, oh, maybe sixty is is more than we need if the pavement is going to be only twenty-two. But having heard Eric and the the pavement maintenance issues, I think it would be perfectly okay to go back to twenty-four. And make stripes if you need them on this side. But back to the sixty-foot thing, the more thought I've given it. Over the course of time since the meeting a couple of weeks ago. I I am in favor of going back to the sixty feet for a number of reasons that are separate from. The actual need for pavement and width for sidewalks, and that is that we also revised the. The regulations to take in to provide for better stormwater resorption, better groundwater recharge. And also. Bike lanes now are often, I mean, the best and safest bike and pedestrian lanes are not right next to the pavement of the road. They're set back a bit. If you see those really nice sidewalks along, say, Route twenty-seven up through Wayland or. Other streets in in suburbs that are are pretty well done. You can allow then, if you have that extra width of sixty feet, which gives you, yeah, with twenty-four feet, that gives you like twenty thirteen feet on each side. You're able to do a number of things that you wouldn't be able to do otherwise. One is to make swales for groundwater resorption. You can place a sidewalk or or bike walk. A little further away from the traffic for little kids. That's good in a subdivision. And also it allows the planning board to better maintain and replant roadside trees. Which is becoming a big deal in town, you know, for climate change. Shading the the pavement is a big plus. And we're losing a lot of our present roadside trees because they're too old or they've they've been abused or for whatever reason. And or the bugs. This would allow more space for trees to be replaced and given the space to grow. On the sides of the streets. And in most of our subdivisions, we really could use more trees. They're kind of, you know, much too wide open, and that's one of the reasons everything looks so wide. So I'm in favor of restoring sixty feet for all those reasons. And also it. Right now, we have the problem. If we want to preserve the trees that shade the road. We can only go so many feet beyond, only go through into the right of way. To have jurisdiction over the trees and any tree over the property line, we can have, we can do nothing about. And it leaves a very narrow strip on each side of the road for planting replacement trees. So that's why I'm in favor of going back to sixty feet.
Does anyone else have any comments? I personally like the sixty and twenty-two, especially where, you know, the planning board, if it's a larger subdivision, it gives us, it gives the planning board flexibility. Again, I'm not a fan of pavement. I don't think too many of us are. I understand Eric's concerns from an engineering point of view. But I think a bigger right of way for stormwater management and reducing the pavement. To twenty-two, again, you know, it's not Western Ave, it's a subdivision road, so. But again, it's not the Chris Owen Show. I want to know what people want. So back to Frank, any thoughts, Frank?
I think.
Ready to vote? Rob Wolf, any other thoughts?
I'm good.
Okay, so do you guys like rather than make a motion, you guys like the the sixty and twenty-two?
I'm comfortable with it.
What would you love? I mean, let's have fun with this. What would you, what would you think would be ideal?
Well, I I think that. Is there anything that actually requires a sidewalk on at least one side of the street? Or is that just sort of a town convention that we try to ask for, but we don't always do? Do you know? We do require it on one side. Okay.
But I think in our revised regulations, Gino, didn't we soften that a bit? So we put where where the planning board. I forget what the wording is, but I I think we did make it an absolute requirement.
Yeah, I believe you're right.
So it gives the planning board some leeway. If it's a place where sidewalk is important to have. That's good. But if not, and I I don't think we required it to be a paved sidewalk necessarily, whether it's paved. Or or something permeable. I mean, just enough to get kids off the road. I'm sorry, I forgot the exact wording, but it seems to me it was a little bit softer.
Thank you. Eddie May?
I'm okay with twenty-two sixty. I'm also okay with twenty-four sixty at this point. I kind of. I think either works, but I definitely agree with going back to the sixty-foot right of way.
Okay, because if we go to the twenty-two, and again, it's, you know, or approved by the planning board. So if if it's a large development and the planning board wants to go a little wider. It's giving us or giving the board the flexibility.
I mean, the only thing is is going against this, reducing pavement is one, is potentially a credit. For the MS four permit, but I guess if we already have twenty-two feet. In our rules, we can't necessarily get credit for. Reducing if it's already there. So if we're trying to save things that we are doing to improve, but.
No, it's twenty-four now, though.
It's twenty-four now? Okay, so, all right, I'm sorry, I'm getting myself.
No, but I mean, I mean.
Look at the difference.
I mean, I mean, I mean, that would be my push because it helps also with the permit.
I guess what we still have, what's been undefined is how you achieve these so-called credits. Is is, you know, is there? You know, if we do it now and and reduce, make the reduction now versus. If we. I don't know, it's like they had a, the state hasn't even really figured it out. It seems like. If we, for the phosphorus reduction and for. Other places where we're going to need to, you know, they keep their the big pushes to reduce pavement. And we don't have a lot of places where we can reduce pavement, so. But I don't know if we do it at this point, if if it becomes a situation where we then have done it too preemptively or not, as far as the whole timing of everything. I'm sorry, Chris.
No, I was going to say, I don't think we can worry about things that we don't know. I think we have to look at what's in front of us and make the best best decision. And sometimes leaving it alone is the best decision. That's why I'm, I really want to know what people want to do with this.
Yes, I lean to leaving it alone then. Twenty-four sixty.
Okay. But this is the rest of the board think.
With the subdivision being smaller, I don't really see the Senator brought back of twenty-two, twenty-four. I see Eric's point with the twenty-four. It it was needed. I like the I like the the points that Marion brought up with the. Being able to have the the trees inside of the road and also, you know, with the ability to put in sidewalks and bicycle lanes, especially. And in subdivisions, because, you know, even in subdivision, I live on Town Line Road, which is a cul-de-sac. in subdivisions, because, you know, even a subdivision, I live on Town Line Road, which is a cul-de-sac, it's not a subdivision. But you know, you hear people that live on the end of it, and they end up getting up a pretty decent amount of speed, and so it's nice to have at least that the sidewalk on the one side, we used to have little kids around. It'd be nice if there was something else that helped to slow our people down, like they call my country dramples, you know, the little bumps to help slow some of the cars down, but that could also help guide what, you know, what water flowing off, you know, when heavy rain and so on, but that's not part of this discussion, so. Twenty-two and sixty sound good to accomplish that, but I'm also okay with twenty-four and sixty because of the protection of the of the road, as you have, that is a huge issue in this area.
Eric, any other thoughts?
Like I said, I don't feel that strongly about it. I was strictly wondering twenty-two may be fine. I was just wondering if there was a source of it, the precedent, that's all it was. It's unusual. That's the only reason I brought it up. When entering the point of view, it is unusual, part for preservation of the edges of the road and the maintenance. Was it just, you know, you take your old one, it's a tractor to foot on your side, or, you know, was there something else in there? I don't feel as strongly about it. I probably feel more strongly about the right of way with, I'm not going to speak up on. But, um, what is it? But as far as the payment with, we're talking a foot here and a foot on the other side. It makes it cheaper for the contractor. If you give them a choice, they're going to make it twenty-two. They're not going to care about turning radiuses or about like, you know, pedestrians, because it's cheaper for them to do it. They'll probably grasp at that pretty quickly.
So, so Eric, I just did a Google search and it says for rural roads for speed designs less than forty miles per hour and less than four hundred vehicles per day that the center road width is twenty-two, with the exception of steep or hilly terrain where the width may be reduced. I don't know if that helps at all.
It may be fine. I just haven't seen it. I really haven't. I mean, certainly rural roads, like unpaved roads or, you know, rural roads up in the country, but it depends on, you know, the bends and the turns and so on like that. It might be fine, because like I said, it's minimal truck traffic every now and then, a moving truck. Some shipment will come up it, or, you know, two hundred miles on trucks will hit the mirrors. It's not, it's not the end of the world. I don't feel that strongly at twenty-two, this twenty-four. I was just strictly bringing it up and asking, you know, the basis, that's all.
All right.
Rob has his hand up.
Oh, sorry, Rob, please.
I just wanted to mention a couple of things. I was just looking through the regulations, looked them up on the town website. I didn't see where it says twenty-four feet now, but I may have just missed that. But also, when people were talking about sidewalks, they mentioned a couple of dimensions and things, and what it says there is sidewalks shall be no less than six feet from the edge of the paved street, unless it's meandering, in which case it can be closer, but it's got to be six feet in the area of trees. And sidewalks shall be four feet in width. So that basically says it takes a minimum of ten feet extra on the right of way on top of the pavement on each side, you know, to put in sidewalks. And it does say sidewalks have to be paved, so just, just correcting a couple of things I heard that were different from that. I, but I, you know, I'm, I'm fine with it as written, but I would basically say I would be strongly considering having the planning board requesting a wider street for large subdivisions that had possibility of like bicycles and cars sharing the road. But the regulation as written seems to give us the latitude to do that, so I'm okay with it.
All right, well, we don't have to be unanimous.
Rob, could I just quick ask something? When you looked up the rules and regs, did you look up, was this on the town website?
Yes, is that out of date?
Well, there is one version there that's out of date on the left-hand menu for planning board. There's a rules and regulations, and that's the two thousand and eleven version. And then further down, there's the subdivision rules and regulations, which is the latest one, right? Is that correct, Gino?
Yes, got it.
Yeah, so I'm not sure which one you looked at.
I did look at the old one. You're right. I remember noticing that before, and I forgot about it. Thank you.
All right, does anyone have anything else to add?
I'll just say make it twenty-two feet. I think that I've just, I've unnecessarily extended this meeting and putting doubt in it.
You are such a troublemaker.
I know. It seems like, you know, we're splitting hairs. Every developer will love it. You've saved them probably several thousand dollars on paving and base costs, you know, I mean, I don't think it's that big a deal. And it's like I, like I said at the last meeting, so little development is done under subdivision. It just doesn't matter. You know, I mean, it just doesn't matter. I don't want to marginal, I don't want to make it sound like that, but, you know, we but we've had like a four developments last twenty years or something like that under subdivision control, if that, and they're all cul-de-sacs. That, you know, I mean, it's just, it's going to be, it's not going to be that big a deal. It's going to be a cul-de-sac somewhere, and it's going to be, you know, twenty-two feet, we're more than fine with that. We're not going to see any more of the, all the orchards or whatever it is, you know, those big complex network of streets anymore.
Okay, do I, do I have a motion to approve addition to section four point three point three? That says minimum width of street, streets right of way shall be sixty feet, the street pavement shall be twenty-two feet or is approved by the planning board based on specific conditions of the site or proposed subdivision. Do I have a motion?
I moved.
It's been moved. Wait a second.
Second.
Moving second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I'm going to start with Eddie May. You can say nay. Eddie May?
Hi.
Rob?
Hi.
Frank? And Chris is an aye. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for the walkthrough of everything, too.
So we were presented, and I don't want to discuss it tonight, we were presented with an A, with a new A and R for fifty-five sixty-five Farm Road. So looking at my calendar, it was presented on the fourteenth, but we're all going to meet at town meeting on April twenty-sixth. And with the long weekend, I don't want us to look at this on Zoom on these little screens, so. But I want an input from the board. What I would like to do is I'd like to vote on it like an hour or half an hour before town meeting. So that means, and then over the next week, can people get, well, Gino's going to send an email out, so you guys can look, get it on your screens. And if you have any questions, you can ask him. I'm going to try to meet with Gino at town hall and actually look at the full plans. I also think, and we'd have to really count down the days, because I don't want to screw this one up. We have a meeting on May third, which is in person. I think that's cutting it super close. But I will do whatever the board wants. So Rob, Frank, Eddie May?
This was presented on the fourteenth. Do we have a time deadline that we need to address this?
Twenty-one days.
Which comes out to, I think, May fourth or fifth.
I don't want to hear, I think, Gino, that, I'm teasing you. So you guys want to just.
You were saying May thirty is too soon, but we, it kind of needs to happen by then, right?
No, 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 I'm not saying it's too soon. I think it might be cutting it too close.
Yeah, yeah. So you're proposing right before town meeting, like six-thirty at next Tuesday?
We're going to be posted anyhow. We'll, as long as everyone can look at it. I, I'd like to look at the full plans, and then we can vote on it on the twenty-sixth if everything looks okay and sign it just before town meeting. I mean, do you guys think that's a pain in the neck? Is it one more thing to do? I just want to make sure whatever we do with that property, we do right, we do properly.
I'm fine with it.
You, but Chris also wanted to hand out, you know, those flyers. Are we still planning on doing that?
We are planning on, we are planning on doing that, but we're going to have to sit down and actually spend five, ten minutes with the A and R. I mean, my intention is that over the next week, we'll spend time and we'll look at it, and then if we have any questions for Gino, we'll be there, we can sign it right there. But I don't want to overcomplicate.
What time are we posted for?
I don't think we're posted yet, Gino.
I mean, do we do six o'clock? Is that too early for everybody?
I could be there at six.
Just been for a really long night. You go eleven, but.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, when was the A and R received?
The fourteenth, I believe. Gino, was it the fourteenth?
It was the fourteenth.
Okay, so twenty-one days would bring us to May fifth, Thursday, May fifth.
Yeah.
Two days after the next scheduled meeting. We can do it either way. I'm, I'm, I'm fine with either.
What would you, what would you prefer? What would be best? I, so right now, I can tell Frank would prefer to do it on the third. That's, that's fine. I just want to know what the board wants.
Um.
I prefer the third if we can do it.
What's, I mean, two days, we, we sign it and it gets. I mean, I, I I don't believe.
If you don't sign it, you got to get the notification that you disapproved before it automatically passes.
Okay, so Gino, I have a homework assignment for you. Could you confirm that the third absolutely positively works? Would you check with Jackie?
Sure.
And then if that's the case, let's just do it on the third, because I, you know, I don't want to make town meeting any crazier for people. I thought if everyone was on board with it, we'd just get it off our desk. But I want to respect the wishes of everybody, and, and if, you know, if people are, obviously, people are working and they want to go home and have something to eat before town meeting, because it is going to be a long night. So is that, is that fair? And then Gino will just send an email and just confirm with us that if, if she says the fifth is the drop dead date, then we'll put it on the agenda for the third. Is that fair with everyone? Hello? So I'm hearing crickets. Okay, so that's, that's what we'll do with that.
You don't look like you're convinced. Who, you know, like.
I think she's fine. All right, Gino, any updates on development projects?
No.
Has anyone had a chance to look at the draft community information form?
It's a long form.
Yeah, a lot of blank pages, though.
Yeah, a lot of them.
The, the one thing that I have, and I, if you saw the end, end of it, the comment I had, it says provide the name of the person who will be responsible for compliance with section three. Who the heck is that? The closest thing I can think is the chairman of the planning board. But then it asks for the email for the person who will be responsible and the phone number of the person who will be responsible. The, everything else, I think, is pretty straightforward. I checked off that, yes, we would like compliant, we would like technical assistance and whatever, whatever they, I checked all of the above for the type of technical assistance, either funding, M A P C, consultant or model bylaw, probably all of them would be helpful.
So, Gino, under the name of person who'll be responsible, at this point, it should either be you or me. What do you think?
I, I agree. I mean, I, I could put me, but as long, as long as, well, it does say, it says the person to ensure compliance and or lead a committee that will undertake compliance. So I could put, I could put me if that simplifies it.
Well, in case someone executes me later tonight, maybe it would be better to put your name. That's a joke. It doesn't matter. If you want to use my name, put my name. We just have to make sure at some point that it gets changed, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Then, then use my name, my email address and everything. You know, now here's another question. The town email, if somebody sends me an email, do you look at that?
No.
No.
Okay, that's too.
I think it's better to just be Gino. I, I just think for the longevity of, as they, they work the kinks out of whatever this program is. Kind of.
That's fine.
A non-elected name is better.
Well, thank you, because I was trying to get him off the hook. I don't want to do it. I'd rather have him get all the messages.
Okay.
All right. So there's no other action we have to take on this, other than you finish it and mail it by May second, correct?
Correct. The, the one still outstanding item, which I think is, is under, well underway, is the, the parcel, parcel map update, which I talked to Wendy now like every other day, and I think it's supposed to be submitted like this week, this week or next week. It's, it's being worked on by the consultant. And so we should be fine.
Okay. That's fine. Perfect.
Could I ask a question about MBPA communities? Sorry. Have they finalized the, the requirements or is this a process they're starting even without the final requirements?
Yes, this, this just, this gets us interim compliance. Well, the, the comment period ended March thirty-first. They're reviewing those comments now. And they, they will come out with the, with, with the, every indication is the, the requirements will be significantly lessened, though we don't know to what extent.
Okay. Do you know a timeline on that, when they're going to get those requirements?
I heard maybe June.
Okay. Okay.
Well, I think like the way I heard it was at least June.
And, and Marion, what we had said was, as soon as we find out, I'll let the select board know, and if they want, Gino and I to come to, if you guys want us to come to a meeting, that's fine. If you just wanted in writing, that's fine. I mean, whatever, whatever you guys would prefer.
Okay.
Okay. So Gino reports on meetings with other boards. Does anyone have anything to report? Nothing? M W R T A, Rob, nothing?
Well, I did just respond to them. They had a they had communications with John Higley in the past about the proposed developments on Coolidge Street and the idea of putting in a bus stop there. Yep. So I just had to let them know that, that's basically on hold at this time, so.
Good. But we are looking forward to having a stop sometime in town, you know. Gino, town planner report, anything?
Yes, as you noticed, my background here, I need to take a new picture now. Down in the basement, Rob saw the space today. Chris saw it, at least in part yesterday, as the, Eddie, Eddie May was there today as well. So come on by, see, take a look. Well, you might want to wait till I get rid of some of the boxes still piled everywhere.
So is there a table down there that's big enough for us to have a small meeting?
It's the same table that was, that was upstairs.
You need a bigger table, Gino.
Not, not up to me.
We need a bigger table so we can actually put plans out and look at things down there. All right. Does any, does anyone have anything else they would like to discuss this evening? All right. If there's nothing, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And again, everyone, thank you for your patience this evening. It, it was, it was sort of a tough early deliberation. It would have been. It would have been hard to have decided or voted any other way. But, you know, this is a great board, I think, would be willing and we would work hard with conservation, border health, if that issue came up and they needed us to do it. So, but if we do it, let's do it right. All right. Everyone, have a great evening. Thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Wait, did you vote to adjourn?
No, I voted to adjourn. Okay. Chris, you doing real calls?
Yes, Eddie May?
Aye.
Rob?
Hi.
Frank?
Hi.
And Chris is an aye. Thank you very much, everyone.
Bye.
Good night.